Okay, we're back on the session again with the new launch information items. First, we've got beef in the school update.
You know, it's pretty exciting to have John here with us today because he's been called the chairman of the Beef in the School Committee through the foundation. And, uh...
(laughing)
He's like, uh... I thought you missed your moment. Anyway, that committee has met a couple of times since the idea was taken to the foundation. And we will sometime later in January have beef in our schools and we'll make an announcement and we'll get things in the newspaper, do something to publicly make sure that we're sharing and thanking the people that are donating and making this happen. And what John has been working on very strategically is getting patrons involved so that we know the timeline for processing and to have another batch. I may be using the wrong words because I'm not a beef person, but he'll have a mix beef for our school available when we're running out and we have space in the freezer for the next one. And it sounds like from the efforts of the committee, which is John and Jeremy, Abel, and Miranda Robinson?
Miranda Robinson.
I've got the little... Oh, I'm sorry. Glad she's got her to let her know that I'm in the district. So, we will have beef in our school year. We've been out since October. And one of the things I wanted to use that we'll do a concerted effort to make sure that we get more information out and know thank yous being with that so that people know it's appreciated. And let other people know the benefit to the district for two things, the cost savings, but also to have good local beef that we know is helping and a benefit to our community.
Thank you. Moving on to the early three, the end of middle and year term and written survey.
Pretty interesting. I don't know where your superintendent was when we asked you to approve early dismissal on January 20th, which is an in-service day, you know, it's Martin Luther King Day, at 2:00 for the students. So, what I will tell you is, well, when that staff was involved, they set up, be able to leave if they need to leave earlier than the 3, because the start that day is a little earlier than the other days. But I just wanted to remind you that that's a big time for our district and that school is previously approved for dismissal at 3:00 on those other three days of the week.
Thank you. Moving on to the poverty simulation in service in the new school.
You know, I cannot tell you how thankful we had to be to our community for their support. There were seventeen positions for people that played roles. And we had all seventeen of them covered when we were getting ready for the day of it. There was one person that had a business problem and another person's tractor went out, so they couldn't come. So, the group regrouped and Bree Betts was one of our... Did I say your name wrong?
Yeah.
No, you did. Bree was one... She had one of the busiest jobs because she was the employer. The people had different roles that would lend themselves for role-playing. Your staff went in. People that were... Our grandparents were eight-year-olds that made twenty-year-olds. Bree, how old were you?
I was fourteen. I'm Jessica.
Just interesting things that you can talk to your employees about this. And so, many thanks go to our community members and our staff to make a meaningful day to understand how to better support our students. Kelly Larson from the Chamber was there. Bree McRehals was there from the City State Bank. Martin Helmer was there from Village Lives. He did a fooderama. Pastor Gabe did the interfaith position. Krista Biggs played our childcare. She was excused from a parents' teacher in-service in Beloit so she could be here. Social Services was covered by Judy Coats from the Health Department and Marilyn Melman from Village Lives. Angela Horstie from Bank of Tuskegee took care of the mortgage position. Joanne Detmer from Citizen State Bank was the banker. Deirdre Mayhem from the city, who takes care of utilities, was the utility company person. Lori Spears was a quick cash person from Bank of Tuskegee. Pat Forns was the community member who was the pawn shop lady, which was kind of interesting. Madonna Reinhardt was here from the Health Department to cover healthcare. Dustin Florence, they led him to go home morning from the Sheriff's Department to be the police officer. We put some of our naughty juveniles in juvenile detention. And one of the persons... One of the... Everybody did a great job, but I heard several people commenting about Susan Marshall, who was a bad guy. He was going around trying to talk people into buying things, you know, for her benefit and just... It was just... So, well, it boiled down to me what it should be. It was a learning experience for all of us. And your superintendent, who refuses to role-play, just got to walk around and listen and see how people... We know, we all hear and know people who had struggling times. And to see the problem-solving, when you have limited funds and when you have disasters that happen, that... And to, although there was... Sometimes you'd hear laughter, you knew it was laughter of better understanding of what was going on. It's just... So, we thank you for letting us once again have Spooky Hill come and provide that kind of service. And we thank our community for those fifty people that did half their day in the businesses that let their employees kind of spend half their day with our teachers.
And next we've got the E S West Department of H Vac area.
Well, we do have a barrier up there. I don't know if you've seen the big snow truck in front of that with the ballet recital and things. We thought we should have something where the community activity at that point. Mike Hansen has been working really hard. He has some community people involved. Mr. Lane allowed them to go in on one of the days we weren't in school and they used some of his equipment to do what they needed to do with getting the barriers put together. And that should... We're waiting on DigSafe to come and let them know where they can dig the holes. And when that's finished, we'll let you know what community people were involved in that. But it should be done in the next month before we need to get it.
Next we've got the E S Gym Floor Analysis.
I took some pictures. And if you have a minute, you should go by and see how sparkly shining that floor is. I did send an email tonight to the recognition and asked Chelsea to see if she could talk with the coaches about having the kids bring non-street shoes that they come in like our elementary kids do so that floor continues to be workable for the long range. It cost us not as... It cost us not as much as I anticipated, but it still is one of those expenses that you have to do. And we know that we need to be putting out the high school floor for bid because it should have been totally taken to the base and sand it down. And that's about an eighteen thousand dollar project, so I'll be talking to you about putting that out for bids. And we don't want to have to do that... My point is, we don't want to have to do that at the elementary school and take care of it.
We need Wednesday.
Somehow. So, I sent her that email tonight. Okay. And if you'd like me to forward that to you, I could do that.
That'd be great.
And next we've got the more planning age by system repair at the high school.
In your package, you have a page that looks like this. It's Calabrese on one side and on the backside is the information about the filter. On the front side, you don't have trouble with that. And a big guy came out and met with our maintenance guy. And they went up on the front side, helped me identify his problems, a load valve and amplifier part. And he said that Dennis should not have taken the filters out of those because that impacts the wind in there. Well, Dennis had taken the filters out. Because on the backside, the guys that are on those units say, and I underlined it, for most application, it is recommended that the filters be removed in winter time to prevent clogging with frost. So, that's why he had been taking them out. And this gentleman said, "Don't put them back in." And these things, as he monitors them, they don't have the bouncing back and forth. So, hopefully, we got it. We finally found out what the problem was and we've had it taken care of. I know that doesn't address all of the units of our concern to you and that we need to look at for future facility needing. But if that takes care of the shock and the gym from losing their heat in the filter that they're highly utilized, that's a benefit. So, I just wanted you to know what we had done. Or my husband tells me I say "we" too generously. What Dennis did, following up once again with the Calabrese people and once the Calabrese person was able to tell him.
I'll read them.
Okay. Next we've got FEMA shelter.
Well, tomorrow we're having our construction meeting, but I want you to know the plans that were in this plan. And Chris has been working with the FEMA people to give the money that we know they part of the seventy-five point five percent to pay. And we know this will improve goals for this month that we have another portion of them. They're laying more concrete between the buildings. And we've had discussions about the conduit that is necessary for the fiber to go over there. So, we have the internet access and we have the security cameras. So, we'll know more and I will update you next month. Just as the progress is being made, if you drive by and you think nothing is going on, but if you were there today, you saw concrete trucks and they were working on the connection between the two buildings. So, we're making progress. It will be done by March, as I said.
Next we've got the 2020-21 Calendar Committee Work.
The committee has been meeting and I'm going to tell you that we'll have in the discussion section, Melody came and she will present that too. So, I just want you to know... You want to go ahead and talk about it now?
I can't. It's whatever you want to do. Is this where you want me or maybe?
We'll wait until discussion. If that's okay.
That's okay.
So, they've taken stuff to their staff. They've done lots of work on this. So, I just wanted you to know, in case we didn't have it ready for you, they are already in Melody's here to talk to you about it later.
If there are any questions, we can notice in the discussion. And next we've got the Superintendent's Report.
We did a touch list walkthrough this last week. I'm amazed at how far off it was just over the Christmas weight when I came in and turned away. We are going to be able to finish up the Safe School Grant with the cameras because now FOSSAGE and the Precision Electric people have been able to get the wiring that needs to be in there so the outdoor cameras will be back in place. And then the cameras down in the cafeteria that were part of that Safe School Grant will be finished because they can get in and get all that wiring together. So, that's exciting. It's another project that will be done. Something that has surfaced, and I'm sure Miss Schumacher will talk to you about this, is the windows are magnificent. They bring in lots of bright light, but sometimes it's too bright to see the whiteboard. So, the conversation is what kind of window covering we may need to put in place to give them bright lights. I anticipate that we'll have a walk, final walkthrough on the elementary school by the next meeting. The touch list was not there as long as I thought it would be. And they've talked about trying to get things addressed. Dennis asked me to come over and I'd like to see him after lunch today. And getting the finishing parts of the windows, the inside trim, where they go in. And I was corrected, it's not clogging, it's epoxy clogging. So, if you know the difference, you know that that's better than what I was thinking was there. And it matches the color of the metal that they put in. It just looks... I don't know. I don't think it was in a classroom. We were really looking closely in the third grade classroom. And it looks good. One really strange thing with it, though, in the band room, it has windows... They're high windows and they're behind the barricades. You know how you have the fence there? Of all the windows, those windows have a latch that will open and a screen on them. Well, nobody can reach them to open them. And they said those kind of windows cost about $300 more than the windows we put in, and they don't know why. But when you do your walkthrough, you're going to see, you know, the crank latches and screens on. You wouldn't know it because it's there behind the fencing, but anyway. My question to them was, "You can't charge us for that." And they said, "No, no, that's what they sent us, that's part of it." So, you know we're not being charged $300 more for each window.
How many levels do you think was in there?
I think they're nine.
Did it get open?
If you can reach them. You'd have to have a step ladder for most of us because they are high. The next in-service will be on the 20th. As I said, we will have a KISA preparation and do some more student support thing that seems to be going really well. Every year we give a REAP grant, which is a federal money that can be spent on certain things in rural districts. It's a rural education equalizer funding. And we, in the past, have spent that to support the small class sizes. So, I've asked Mandy to order that money. It has to be spent within nine days. So, we'll have them go out in payroll and then we'll go in our accounts and we'll help cover people who have the small class sizes. I asked the Chamber, I called and left a message with Chris and she will take it to the Chamber Board. We've been paying a $350 membership to the Chamber and there's a $50 nonprofit membership. It seems to me like we don't qualify as tax-supported as a nonprofit. So, I've asked her to take that to the Board to see if we qualify for the lower membership. There is a new requirement that's due by January 5th to have information on your district website for district performance and funding accountability. So, I'll be working with... To make sure... That just came this afternoon. I'm going to have to talk to you about it, so.
I knew it was coming.
Oh, you were aware of it?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, we'll make sure that that's there because Dale Dennis said January 15th, and I don't want to cross Dale Dennis. You know, he is the Citizen of the Year in Kansas. You see the award from a group, which he has done so much for public schools. It's nice that somebody recognized that. And I like to be on as good as I can. Part of the REAP grant is important because after last meeting, you asked me to do some work on the budget. And the budget will be very close. It will be between transportation and taking care of buses and taking care of books and supplies. Mandy and I will be doing some, talking with the authorities about how we can take some things, we've taken out a general fund that can come out of the '08 fund so we don't have bridges right now that we have in the general fund. But I do not believe that we'll have to go into, you know, contingency reserve this year. But we'll have to keep doing what we're doing, being careful with every penny that we spend. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And next moving on to the Principal's Report from Mrs. Smith's. And it's in your hand up there. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, I'd like to add two quick things. As Dr. Betty had talked about, the window coverings, and we had been talking about different options. Those would be blinds or curtains. In the walkthrough, one of the engineers did suggest that there's companies in Kansas, one is in Manhattan and one is in Salina, that offer like a clear coat, like a film that they would just place over it and it's rather easy to install. The price includes installation. We just give them the square footage of the windows and they would be able to quote us a price. The square footage I got today from the engineer was 980 square feet, but that includes the hallways, which wouldn't need that protected. So, we can look at the prices for that. Also, we had some good news today. Kelly Obermuller wrote on the Donors Choice website, if you're not familiar with Donors Choose, teachers and other nonprofit groups can put up a wish list, if you will, of something they'd like to start. And individuals from around the country can look at it and choose to donate. She asked for some STEM materials to do some science projects with her students. She asked for about $780. All of that was totally funded, so she will get to purchase that. And it was funded rather quickly, like less than 10 days. And some of those were local community members that contributed. There was individuals from California, New York, and places around the country that also contributed as well. So, that was excellent.
That's great. Thank you. And next we've got Mrs. Walters.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things also, just a quick. I have one here that the JAVP is this week due to some scheduling conflicts. It was... We postponed it to January 22nd. So, the sixth and eighth graders will come to the high school on January 22nd and have a JAVP at 1:30. The other thing is, is I didn't get it on here, but tomorrow, we have a... It's called the Future Maker Mobile Lab from Wichita Tech coming up. And it's a big... So, if you drive by the school and you see it, it's a big... It's not even a van. I don't even know. It's like a semi trailer. And in the van, there is simulations for welding, auto painting, and aircraft assembly. And they get to go in and it's kind of a virtual, where they get to do some of these things virtually. And then in the classroom, they come in and do a classroom session, and that's a gravity physics experiment. So, we're going to do three sessions. And I'm trying to get all the high school kids, some of the seniors, not all the seniors, but a good majority of the seniors, but ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, in at least one of the sessions. So, I just wanted to let you know that. So, if you drive by the school tomorrow, you'll see them. They're going to be at Sylvan tomorrow and then Tuskegee on Thursday. And that's all the other things that I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Walter. And next we've got the Chief Commissioner's Report. And that's probably a down in the queue. We'll move on to discussion items. E, what category?
Calendar.
Oh, calendar, sorry. So, we're all big. And it's got mine on the calendar. What was yours?
Okay. If you would please look at the calendar you have, I'll just kind of walk you through it and explain a few things. We would begin the school year on August 10th, which would be an in-service day. And then the 11th and the 12th would be teacher workdays to prep, to get ready for the school year. In September, we have Labor Day off on the 7th. And then we moved our in-service day, instead of having it on Monday like we normally do, we moved it to Tuesday, the 22nd because KSDE is having an MTS free workshop in Salina at the Tony Center, I believe it is. And we thought this way it'd save the district money and we just all go down on that day. So... In October, we have the 12th, which is a half-day workday or in-service day and a half-day workday to end the nine weeks, to give teachers an opportunity to finish up their grading, all that kind of stuff. We have parent-teacher conferences set up for Thursday, October 22nd, and October 26th on Monday, those two evenings. It gets kind of hard to find, to figure out what days to have those because there are so many activities finishing up at that time. We have volleyball finishing up. We have junior high volleyball finishing up, junior high football, and high school football. We then put the teacher day off for having those two evenings on the 30th of October. And the reason we did that is because on the 29th, the high school has... Is it regional, Christie? Is that regional football?
District.
District. Their last district football game. And so many times, they end up traveling several hours away and the kids are home very late in the evening. And so, we thought that would help with that then if we had our, the compensation day on that Friday. In November, we have the 11th, which is Veterans Day, where we will have in-service and the students are off. December, we start break at 1:00 on the 18th. And then we have the two weeks up to January 1st. The following Monday is a half-day in-service, half-day workday, give teachers an opportunity to get prepped, to get the start, year started. The 18th, Martin Luther King Day. February the 15th, President's Day, we have in-service. In March, we have the 5th. The 4th is the end of the nine weeks. And we have the 4th as a half-day in-service and a half-day teacher workday to finish up grades because we have conferences starting on Monday evening, the 8th, and Thursday evening, the 11th. And then we begin our spring break, starting with the 12th. In April, Easter is on the 4th. And there are many districts that are having Friday and Monday of Easter weekend. We have some parents who like the Friday off and some parents who like the Monday off. And so, we tried to work it in the calendar. We'll just have Friday and Monday off because we could work it in and still have our usual count of days. The 26th of April, we have an in-service day. And then we finish out the school year. 17th, we have a full day. The 18th, we have a 1:00 dismissal. The 19th, we have a teacher in-service day. The 20th, we have in-service day in the morning, work day in the afternoon, and then our final workday on the 21st to wrap things up for the year.
The other thing this does is seniors would go a couple days longer through the May of November. And graduation could be that weekend of Saturday the 15th or 16th and be away from Mother's Day as it's been. I have to add, the committee took this very seriously and they went back and talked to their teachers. This is not just a committee recommendation. This came back from... Do you see this as E3? We started out with A, B, C, D, E. And then we took the E and made modifications and had an E2 and an E3. And this is the one that the committee rounded and the principals were there. Is there anything else you ladies would like to add to the committee work?
I was just going to make the comment that graduation, not being on Mother's Day on this, that year. That year on Mother's Day.
As far as the students' day, is this a hundred count of full students' day, 160 like their current calendar?
Yes, it is. And the teachers is the same. And the teachers is the same contact day. There's been some question. And yes, the teacher comp day is counted as a day because we don't count the evenings, the two evenings that they work. So yes, indeed, if anybody asks you that, that is counted as a teacher workday because on the two in-service days, they're working a day and a half each day. So they have that on. So you have the people here that can answer your questions.
This is also coming up as a possible action item or table. And I know this was just presented to you today. So my question is also, as a board, would you like to move ahead as any action items tonight? Or would you like to study this a little bit closer? And bring it back to you as an action item. You know, historically, we have this information item or discussion item, the next action, the next information statement.
Yes, sorry, this is one of the, um... Does this eliminate the first day, last day school issues or concerns? With stepping, with leave days, does this kind of get away from that as well?
I think it should. I think it should.
Okay, so.
What would the faculty of the grade school be?
The track meet? The, sorry.
I imagine the, I'm, I'm, Sherry? Don't you suppose the track meet would be the 17th and the 18th? This last year, we had the upper grade track meet on the last day with 1 o'clock dismissal. Wouldn't you say, Sherry?
Yes, that's what we, that works really well for us. We just changed our tracking for that day. And it kind of depends on the high school, when they have their early outs for their kids because I use those kids. Those kids are, they run my events. So it's usually if they have...
The finals exemption will be that Monday, Tuesday, the 17th.
Is that, is that the last? So that would be...
We would work well with that.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'd like this, we've got to bring it back to our committee. And next, with the E-rate category two bits, or category two bits.
It should be a, like, there's anything that you could do. That's not, I don't think we would. That's in your packet. Okay, now, we filed our Form 470 back in November to put out bids for our E-rate eligible items. We had seven vendor walkthroughs and six return bids. And Dr. Betty and I sat down and opened those and went through those and did what was called a bid evaluation. And that's what you have here. We have been waiting, we, E-rate people have been waiting on the FCC to come out with their new ruling because with our category two, we had a five-year budget that would have expired this year. So we weren't sure what they were going to do from this year, next year forward. And in December, in early December, they came out with a ruling. And on the top of this page, it kind of summarizes that. They decided to extend the five years to a sixth year. If it's in your packet.
It's in the morning of your packet.
So instead of starting over with another five-year cycle, they're going to extend it for one more year. There's a 20% increase in the budget per student. And the budgets will still be building specific. With that being said, we're not going to have the money that we thought we would have. They're going to start everybody over fresh for the 21, 22 school year. And then for the next five years, you'll have that budget. So since we aren't going to have the money that we thought, I'm going to recommend that we move forward. We, we got RFPs on wireless LAN at the high school to put access points in the classrooms. We, and then we had an RFP to get the fiber to the safe room and then the access point in the safe room, as well as the switch. And then our maintenance and our firewall. I'm going to recommend that we move forward with the safe room because we need the fiber to the safe room to be able to do the doors, the cameras, the wireless, and everything out there. The maintenance. And then there's also the fiber between the server room and the concessions area. While we're running fiber to the safe room, I'm recommending that we go ahead and run fibers from the server room to the concessions. It's been there since the building was built. So with that, I have the bid evaluations for those three things on those blue sheets. And if you see, I'm a bit scared about the vendors, you'll see which one. So we start with the safe room. Did anybody see that one? Yep. We have to wait those. We can pick what we want to wait the bids on and cost has to be the majority of that. So we went with the cost, whether they included all the components, if they have prior experience with us, and if they're a local vendor. And Tamara and her assistant at Smokey Hill sit down with me and kind of help me with those waiting points. And then Dr. Betty and I opened up all the bids and we went through and we put the prices down here, what they quoted. And Eagle, I'm going to recommend that we accept the proposal contingent upon E-rate from Eagle for our safe room addition. It's $5,823. We pay 20% of that, okay? It gets all approved. It's all based upon the approval. The next one, let's go with the fiber between the server and the concessions van. And you'll see down below all the bids that we received. And Eagle, again, was the lowest, $1,256.90. And then the basic maintenance. And that is on eligible E-rate items. Again, Eagle's $100 per hour. We do a $6,000 prepaid with them to get that rate. We very rarely use all of that. So some of the money that is left over will go back into the budget so that we can pretty much do it. Any other questions? We approve that tonight. They can file our Form 471. It's got to be filed so that we can move forward. Everything is based on E-rate approval.
Just a quick question. No one that, modern technology, smart watches, smartphones, everybody's connected and see why they're adding more access points?
Yeah.
And is there certain limitations currently in the system as far as streaming, video, Netflix, things like that? Some of that will take a lot of gap.
Yeah, we are, we were approved this year for, because we don't have quite the budget at the high school that we did at grade school because they have less students. But we had enough to get one more access point. So we're going to add it over by the science, English, middle history, that hallway, to help with that traffic there. So hopefully, then in a year, we can start adding more.
So my question is, do we block any of that?
Do we block the streaming? Do we restrict what some of the kids are streaming? That's what he means. Should be, unless they have their wifi now. But yeah, they're using their phones as hotspots, but yeah, we...
Okay, I just want to make sure that you don't need the school wifi system.
It's more the number of devices that are connecting to one access point that's the issue, more than what their connectivity. Because we have probably 40 some devices in that hallway on one access point. So we really need to, and plus, some of the updates are limited because like the access point is older here, so it's not allowing the others to update. And we need to get those updated so we can keep moving forward with our wireless connectivity, so.
The other thing, the access, we have to guarantee that we have protections to certain things that kids can't access because it is not appropriate. So that, that is built in, that's not the Netflix, but I mean, the free like...
But I was wondering, I know the screen, YouTube videos, music.
Yeah, it should be, but it's ever-ending. It's trying to figure out where they're going next. But sometimes we have teachers that request that they have to access the certain videos and we try to allow that for educational purposes and everything. In the next year, five-year cycle, the FCC said that our budget will be based as a district. So it'll do away with that building per building budget. So that'll be nice because then we can get our firewall. It'll be based on that district budget, not just the high school budget. So that's, that was a good thing that they changed that. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, move on to resolutions. And turn to Congress, then number three.
We took action last summer to expand what we got through this year with board officers until July 1st. So do we need to take action in this process?
Okay, any questions about, I'm sorry. And moving on to, um, resolution, private office planning.
I understand that this has happened the last couple of years. There are insurance, UNC insurance planning out of the haze gave us a plan that it got a bad issue. So we'd like you to accept that funding.
And moving on to Congress, tuition dispersals.
This is another one of those that comes to us and goes into the JAVP. You know, I asked you to accept it. Do you have another $1.40?
And next, the tuition reimbursement information.
Just following the policy that we have, we got one staff member looking for, who has turned in everything of the policy outlines and will ask you to approve that payment to her. And the way you have the policy written up, it comes out at payroll time because they have to pay taxes, et cetera, on it. And so we, I, we have it lined up to come out in the next payroll. She followed all the deadlines, the grades, the everything that is in the policy and copied that in your materials. So she has your grades and that she paid and did what she needed to do. And she had it all turned in. And she's the only person that indicated to us first semester that she was returning that in four, three months. And so we asked you to put that.
And next, with LBSH50 project.
Well, it's not finished, so.
Quick comment on that, I guess due to this for Mrs. Schmidt. But if there's a staff member who would like their windows left uncovered because they like the light that is in there, would be that option.
We had talked about that. And the only issue with that is that time staff members change rooms for different reasons and it necessarily wouldn't work. It really would depend on what would be the option we would choose, whether that's the curtains, the blinds. The idea is if somebody chose to do it and someone chose not to, later on, retroactively, we can't go back and then put curtains up or covering or blinds.
Well, thinking more, look on the north side. The sun doesn't come in on the north side. If I've got these really nice windows and now we're going to cover them up, it just seems odd.
Well, it's, but you're not, all of the windows are. You're just doing the ones that they're having.
Can we even afford to do that? Is that part of?
It's something we have to do.
Okay. Yeah, it is up to you. Again, it's whatever you would choose for covering.
But we're getting, but it would be all windows, wasn't it? Just the ones that have...
It could be, yes, it could be.
It could be all, okay. Other than, we certain ones that...
We wouldn't cover up the hallway.
But there was too much light.
So there aren't seeing this too much light, much like on the north side also where the sun doesn't shine?
Not necessarily at those, no. It's the library where the first and second grade rooms are and then where the third grade rooms are seem to be the most problematic areas.
I'm not, I'm not sure if they'll make this, but I'll make some static films. You could go on the inside, you're looking to remove the two windows. I'm seeing that going to pass, but I'm not sure if they'll make this.
Mrs. Savars, do you have that particular problem in your room with the light coming in?
I have no idea. I'm there in the mornings and I'm on the west side. So I don't know what it does in the afternoons. But I did talk to, Melody's on the west side, has a west view window. What is it like?
When I use my overhead projector, it's really hard to see because the, I mean, the light is wonderful, but it makes it so it's really hard to see with the board, so.
I have that trouble in the mornings. Even when the sun's on the east side of the building, I, you know, it's hard, sometimes it's hard to get the projector to work even when the light's off because there's a lot of sunlight. Especially when the sun's down.
I guess give us a date and see what options there are.
Sure.
Okay, so, so they didn't walk through that we don't have a final bill for any of them?
There was something kind of interesting because I was talking with Mandy about trying to compare costs. And we really can't do that for this year because it hasn't been tight sealed because of the wood there. But the engineer came up with an interesting calculation that they can do with their information. When we have it sealed and when we have comparable times of the year, they can put this information into some software and can tell us what our actual savings are with the new system. And that was the hope when we put in the bar units, that we were going to save, they'd be more efficient in it. It's just that they say they're more quiet. They're thrilled about that. But that's something that I'm sure with whomever's here in the future, to be sure that, that we get with Brenda to have him get that information to us so you know what you're actually saving.
Yeah, I would think whatever he provides with the brain is all.
I understand that. But if they, if they can do something that...
Man, I know too much of that, yes. But I don't trust the guy.
The amazing, I'm asking too about as far as we got the final bill yet. I'm not sure they even walked through it in the first part, but I was wanting to make sure that the credit they told us would do us the...
Yeah, where are we, where are we? They're supposed to get that information to us. And I did ask those specific questions. And you know, we created some cost for us in the gym with that. And they said that they would have that all broken out for us.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, along with the efficiency of the system, that was a nice question, conversation. Yeah, that's, it was a good conversation.
And we want to dispose of antiquated technology equipment.
This is one of those kind of just weird things. We'd like your permission as Brenda and Rich go through areas where we have things stored. An example would be some covers for iPads that we don't, we don't use for anything anymore. But they're just taking up space. We had somebody call and want to know about buying something related to iPads. And we said we can't do that because we don't have, we have not permission for the disposal of them. And that person found them someplace else. But we would just like your permission, stuff that we are no longer using that is just taking up space because it's old and what, what our kids need to be networked. So we'll ask you to give us approval to go through that and give that to the community. You know, we asked you about the extension ports a while back?
Yeah.
Staff took them all, different places in the district. This office wanted some, and this teacher needed some, and a lot of time had been done. But the opportunity was there, they hadn't done it, so.
Still, I'm sorry, I'm going to put down here, you couldn't use them in the shop area, correct? But then you could use them in other classrooms?
If, yeah, if they were a typical extension court, not used for power.
For the capacity that they were.
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
So, no, an example would be, the high school wanted one to take into the commons area. We have staff development to hook up the projector or equipment for, for me to get from. So it's that kind of stuff that is legitimate for, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But all the conversations were to that it's, you know, you've got to be sure that you cover the fire marshal issue.
Okay, moving on to action orders. We need a motion to approve the E-rate category two bid for our items for the safe room. Continue to call the E-rate approval.
I move that we approve the, using the one with Eagle, right? For all three of those items pending E-rate planning.
They'll be separate here, so.
You have to do them separately? Okay, fine.
So E-rate, okay. And we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ma'am. And any discussion? All is in favor? So, next we have a motion to approve the E-rate category two bid for the fiber between the LHS server room and concessions area contingent on the E-rate approval. And you want to make that motion to you?
Sure, why not?
Is that all three?
Sure, why not?
Second?
Yeah.
I've got David on that one. And any discussion? All is in favor?
Yep.
Okay, so it's approved for $1,256.97. And next, we need a motion to approve the E-rate category two bid for the district technology maintenance continued on E-rate approval. And that we made for Eagle technology for $6,000, 100 per hour. And you have a second?
I'll second that one.
Thank you, Gina. Any discussion? All is in favor? Seven up. And next, we need an action to approve the resolution to extend term of board officers.
I assume move?
Thank you, Ma'am. Still have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? All is in favor? Seven up. Next, we need an action to accept a $500 donation from Interest Plan Incorporated.
Will you accept that donation?
Thank you, Gina. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? All is in favor? Seven up. I'm sure thank them for that donation. Next, we have the action to accept the $281.40 for the district quarter length and counter restitution disbursements. I just moved. Thank you, David. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ma'am. Any discussion? All is in favor? Seven up. And next, we need a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement to Nikki Flynn for the 2019 fall semester classes.
I assume move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? All is in favor? Seven up.
Skip those.
Yeah, I was going to say that's-
Bye, anyone?
And next, we need a motion to accept or approve disposing technology equipment that becomes antiquated because no longer are used. Patty? Any background? Any discussion?
How far are you going to do that? On the website or what's?
I think that's what you've done in the past, so. That's what you will do.
And any discussion? All in favor? Seven up. And the next guy, action item is tabled. And next, we have a second session personnel. And we're going to divide up in two portions since we have a lot to discuss. We've got to get here, so we're going to move right on to the next, which is the executive session for students. And how long?
Five minutes?
Five minutes. Okay, need a motion to win the second session of students for five minutes?
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, Rhonda. And I assume you have a second? Then a motion for Rhonda, second, but Gina, the meeting may need more debate. We'll do the second session at 9:45. For five minutes, we should have a perfectly discussing matters relating to actions adversely or favor the affected students and the board of staff returns to the meeting at 9:50 in the Board of Education Congress room. The second session is required to protect the privacy rights of students, of students who is identifiable. All in favor? Seven up.